We'll give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, grant us wisdom in our decisions, patience in our discussions, and clarity in our actions. Help us lead with integrity, listen with compassion, and work for the good of all who lives in this county. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mincy White will call the roll of the commissioners.
I, Venus Mincy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Ah.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Ah.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Ah.
And Commissioner Ray Davis.
Ah.
I have determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore, we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. And now you're the floor back to Chairman.
Do we have any modification of the agenda desired by the county manager of the board?
Chairman, I have one item. I'd like to add correction to the resolution that was presented at the last meeting to correct an error.
Okay. You want to go ahead and do that right now?
We need a motion.
Oh, we're gonna need a motion first.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to correct the error?
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll get a second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ransh, I believe the floor is yours.
I'm sorry, sir.
Floor is yours.
Okay, all right, thank you. There was a, on the motion to, the resolution that was passed to object to the city's proposed annexation at the last meeting, that resolution was based on a notice that was emailed to the county from the city. The city later hand-delivered a paper copy that was different than the copy that was emailed, and the emailed copy had an error in the legal description. And so, we have made a new resolution to conform to the second notice, which had a slightly different legal description. That's the only difference in the resolution that's on the bench now.
And just to clarify, that legal definition that you're describing is the actual tax assessor's information that was listed on there, is that correct?
That's correct. There was a parcel number on one parcel that was incorrect.
Okay.
The same parcel number was listed twice, and the second time should have been a different parcel number, and that was different on the second notice that was provided.
Okay. This time, is there any discussion on this issue? Hearing no discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion on this.
Motion to receive the revised resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Side.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Before we move on, is there any other changes to the agenda that we need to make? Okay, hearing done, I'm gonna call for a motion to move into a public hearing.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Moving on here, we're gonna discuss the proposed fiscal year 2026 general appropriations budget and work program. And once you got that ready, we'll get started. So, we're gonna break a little bit from tradition here, and I know in years past, the county managers typically presented the budget. Given our current situation, though, with county manager, I didn't feel that was appropriate to do that, and as a chairman, I felt that I should be presenting the budget here. So, I'm gonna go through this. There are copies that are provided to the public of both copies of what we're about to discuss, and when we get down, I know that it says in the actual agenda that there, it doesn't mention anything about public speakers, but if you have signed up to speak or you desire to speak, we will give you that opportunity before we leave here tonight. So, this is our budget presentation for the evening. Next slide, please. And I apologize in advance, I do tend to get on my feet and wander when I talk, and I will do my best to stay close to the mic, but Venus will hit me if I get too far away. So, this is what we're gonna talk about, it's just our mission, the current status of how we got to where we're at in the county right now, and then we'll actually go in and discuss the details of the budget. Next slide, please. This is our mission statement, it's pretty simple. Mission of the Bullock County Board of Commissioners is to provide quality county services in the most cost-efficient and fiscally responsible manner, and to work cooperatively with the community and other local government units to create a vibrant, safe, emphasis on safe, social and economic environment where our community and citizens can thrive. Next slide, please. So, you know, if you look around at what's going on in our county right now, we've had a pretty rough year. You know, we've had three national, or natural, national, three natural disasters that have directly affected this county, and if you would have talked to any of the leadership in this room, or the ones that were here before us, they would have told you, if you looked at them and said, hey, there's gonna be three storms that are gonna hit Bullock County within three months of each other, and cause the damage that they did, they probably would have laughed and said, it's never gonna happen. Well, it happened. And in the process of doing that, we've spent about $13 million out of our own fund balance to cover those recovery efforts. That money, most of it's reimbursable, but when that money comes back, we've spent money out of our own pocket. We gotta put that money back where it belongs. We also still have money that's floating around with FEMA and GMA from Hurricane Adelia, and that was in 2023. So, you know, we're being affected by more than what's just happened in this last year. On top of that, we've had this bill that was passed this last year, it's called House Bill 581, and that House Bill 581 is supposed to do two things. One of them automatically happened. The people of Bullock County that have their property enrolled in a homestead exemption are gonna get what's called a floating homestead exemption. So, moving forward, what's gonna happen is, looking at your base rate for your property tax assessment, which was developed last year for 2024, going forward, your property taxes will only be able to go up by the amount that is given by the, it's based off the Consumer Price Index that's given by the Department of Revenue for the state. This year, what they're doing is, they're going to use your tax assessment from 2024. So, regardless of what you received in the mail that says, this is what your property was appraised at for this year, your tax assessment is gonna be based off of that 2024 year. That's if your property is enrolled in a homestead exemption. Now, I can tell you that I checked with Bobby Fisher over in the tax assessor's office this morning, currently there are still over 5,000 people in Bullock County that are eligible for a homestead exemption that have not enrolled their property in a homestead exemption. Now, with that, that means that the county is gonna receive the taxes based off of that 2024 rate. So, although you've had an increase in your property values, the county's not gonna see that extra money. When you look at that in accounting, that, it's considered a loss of revenue. The plan to make up for that, the other part of House Bill 581, is that counties are eligible to enact what they're calling a FLOST. It's a 1% sales tax, it's supposed to go directly in to the general fund to offset the property taxes for your county. The only catch with that is, by state law, you have to have a local referendum in order to enact the FLOST. Because the way the bill was passed and the subsequent House Bill 92 that came behind it this year, and it being enacted, we can't even have that referendum, the earliest we could do it is November. So, the county's lost some revenue there, and there's no makeup for it, so there's a gap. Next slide, please. Another issue we've had this year, we had a 40% increase in our healthcare premiums. Now, people can say, hey, just cut the health insurance. You can't cut health insurance. By law, we have to provide health insurance to the people that work in this county. Another thing that we've had, you know, everybody talked in 2022, when they started talking about Hyundai, about all the growth that was gonna come to Bullock County, and I don't think that we've really seen that tidal wave of growth that everybody expected, but what we have seen for the last 10 years is steady growth in the county. So, with that steady growth, if you don't continue to increase your services, you're gonna get behind them. And one of the things that says in our own mission statement, one of the things that the county is required to do by law is provide certain services. We have to have fire, we have to have EMS. The sheriff has to provide law enforcement. Those things have to be provided. So, when you go to provide those services, we've got inflation. Everybody's experienced this. There's been an increase in fuel, increase in maintenance costs, utilities, equipment is more expensive than what it used to be, and wages have to continue to, for local employees, have to continue to go up, or they're gonna leave. Next slide. So, what's the bottom line on this? If you look at our budget right now, as it stands, we have about a $5 million difference between the revenues that are coming into the county and the expenses that we have. You can call it a deficit, whatever you want. We got, we need $5 million. Next slide, please. So, let's talk about a budget for a second. So, in Georgia, state law says that a county has to pass a balanced budget. We don't have the luxury of doing like they do with the federal government, where they don't either, don't pass a budget, or they pass a budget and just print the money to, that they need to meet their ends, or meet what they need. We also have a significant portion of our budget that is dictated to us by other agencies. Okay? Constitutional officers come in and they say, this is what I need to do my job that I'm required by the Constitution to do. We can challenge that. Generally, it doesn't work out too well. And quite honestly, there are certain agencies, like the Sheriff's Department, that if we said, hey, we're just not gonna fund him, he could look at us and go, hey, go pound sand. I'm gonna spend the money anyway, y'all figure out how to make it. We also have other things that the state requires us to provide, like the tax assessor in elections, that we have to fund these things. If you don't pay for an election, what happens? You don't have an election. If you don't have an election, what happens then? First of all, we'll probably all end up in jail. They actually had a mayor in Georgia that was arrested this year for election tampering. Beyond that, you won't have the opportunity to provide your voice in your local leadership. So, then you end up literally with a bunch of little kings running around, trying to dictate what's happening. That election is that ultimate check and balance in our government. We have to provide the funding for that, that's the way Georgia does it. Along with that, the Elections Office has state mandated training that they must attend. They don't get to pick where the training is at. If they say the training this year is in Atlanta, guess what? You're going to Atlanta to attend the training. The same thing with the tax assessor's office. They have to attend training every year to stay up to speed with the current laws. If they don't, the state comes in and says, you are not certified to do your job, and you cannot do a tax assessment. If we don't do that tax assessment as mandated by law, they say that our whole books are out of order, and we don't get any money from the state at all. Final thing here is, there's no mechanism in our laws to allow for an inflationary increase for the local government. So, as the price of goods and services continue to go up, we have to figure out a way to pay for these things. Next slide. So, I'm gonna go back again and just reflect on the county's mission. Over the years, I've been dropped on my head a few times, so I like to make things simple, and this is the simplest way I can do it. County's mission, we provide safety and security to the people that live here. How do we do that? We make sure that you've got roads to go down, that your trash gets picked up, that when you call 911, there's somebody there to answer the call. It's a no-fail mission. If we don't do that right, people die. If your roads aren't safe to travel on, you can't get to work, or you end up in a ditch, or have a head-on with a tree. If you don't have law enforcement there to come when there's bad things happening, you're on your own. If you don't have fire, you're gonna lose everything you own. It's gonna burn up. And when you're having that chest pain, or half your face is drooping, and you call 911 because you think you're having a stroke, you want somebody that's trained, capable, and available to come and assist you in that time of need. We can't fail on this stuff. So, this is not as simple as, hey, we're having a bad year, and we just feel like, hey, we'll just charge the people a little bit more. Next slide. So, what we have here is a tale of two budgets. Okay? We have a budget that's been developed that says, we can maintain the services we provide, and we can continue to expand those services. Now, with that budget, there's no millage rate increase. The millage rate right now is 11.35, and the millage rate will remain at 11.35. On the other side of this coin, we have a budget that will allow for a full millage rollback so that we can meet the law, the taxpayer, Georgia Taxpayer Bill of Rights, to say, we know that our tax digest is increased, so we've cut our budget enough that we're not charging anybody extra in trying to do anything a backdoor tax increase. Okay? Next slide, please. When you start looking at these budgets, these are the basic highlights to them, okay? We're paying everybody in the county. We're maintaining the services that we have. We're gonna make sure that everybody in the county gets a 2% pay raise. Along with that, they have the opportunity to get a 1% merit-based increase. This budget also allows for the county to go in and hire 20 new public safety workers. Of those, eight of them will go to work for the Sheriff's Department as school resource officers. There's also an additional, I think there's two people in there to go work in the jail, and it also provides for another patrol officer. And I can tell you, when you start looking at the Sheriff's Department, the sheriff went several years ago and did a staffing study, and he broke this down to say, hey, instead of trying to hire all these people at one time to meet the need of the county, he said, what we can do is incrementally hire these people. So, with the exception of those eight public, or eight school resource officers, every one of those positions that he's asking to fill were built in based off of that staffing study. That's what he needs to keep going. Okay? People say, well, why do you need more people in the jail? When your jail runs at 80% capacity, which in the corrections industry, they consider that to be full, you've gotta have staff available all the time to manage that population. It's that simple. When you go down and you look here, you've got two people in Public Works, both of these are for solid waste, okay? And then they've got a part-time judicial courts position, and what this is, magistrate court wants to hire another constable to help serve warrants, so that they can move things through the magistrate court quicker. Okay? This is where it starts to get fun. So, in order to make this budget work, we're gonna have to spend 2.4 million, almost $2.5 million out of our fund balance, okay? Now, when we talk about a fund balance, all this is, you know, you can call it a fund balance, a rainy day fund, an emergency fund, whatever it is, it's money that we keep set aside for when bad things happen. Before this year, we had almost $20 million set aside in our fund balance, okay? We spent $13 million this last year. We still haven't got that money back. So, our fund balance is not in the best of shape right now. Okay? Now, with this, in order to keep that millage rate at that 11.3% that I talked, or 11.3 mills I talked about earlier, we're not gonna be able to do a millage rollback. And again, by the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, Georgia statute, it says, if you don't do a full millage rollback to adjust for an increase in your tax digest, it is considered a tax increase. Okay? I'm not gonna try to hide from this. This budget includes a tax increase. Because we will not roll taxes back if we do this. Okay? Now, there's a little asterisk there, because like everything that I've learned in local government, there's nuances to everything. With House Bill 581, going back to what I said earlier, if you have property and it is in a homestead exemption, there's a very high likelihood that your taxes will not go up at all. If you have commercial property, if you have industrial property, if you have rental property, you're gonna continue to pay at that same millage rate. But the fact of the matter is, because of the increase in local property values, the value of a mill has increased. So, this is considered a tax increase. Next slide, please. Going over to the other budget that's been put out, is this, how do we cut the costs? Okay, well, the first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna give all the employees in the county a 1% pay increase, and they'll also be eligible for a half a percent merit-based pay increase. This, well, this budget recommends that we cut five positions from Public Works. Those positions right now, they currently don't have anybody in them. So, we're just gonna take them away. We're gonna do one in Recreation the same way. All those new hires that we talked about, those 20 public safety folks, all the other people that were on there, we're not hiring anybody. We're keeping things just like they are. Also going through, and anywhere that there was an extra nickel in the education, travel, dues, professional services, maintenance of equipment, renting equipment, inmate meals, we've cut everything there is there. So, with that, even doing that, we're still looking at, we're gonna have to spend a little over $2 million to balance our budget this year, if we go this route. If we do this, it will allow us to do a full millage rate rollback, which will be no tax increase. Next slide, please. So, let's talk about the pros and cons here for a minute. So, we go back to this maintaining services budget, it's pretty simple. We're maintaining what we got right now. We're also adding a little bit to it incrementally, so that we can manage the growth that we're seeing in the county, okay? It's that simple. What's the biggest con to it? It equates to a tax increase. Next slide. Look at this budget that we have that we're talking about cutting things. What's the pro to it? Everybody gets a full tax increase, a tax rollback. Let's talk about the cons. You're gonna see cuts in staff. What's that equate to? Longer response times for EMS, longer response times for the sheriff. Instead of having five people on patrol in the county, or excuse me, six, he'll have five. He'll have less people working in the jail. You're not gonna have any SROs in the school, or any of the schools in Statesboro. What concerns me the most is, you're not gonna have training for the staff that we have. So, that means that if you have to have a CPA license to do your job, and you have to maintain a certain amount of professional education in order to keep that license, you're not getting it from us. You're doing it on your own time. You need a license to do your job? Yeah, we're not paying for that either. Get your own license. Some of these folks, especially when you start looking at the tax assessor's office and Elections Office, when they go in, again, I talked about state mandated training. The state says, you have to have this training to do your job. If we do this, we have no way to fund that money, that training. Next slide. Somebody asked me earlier this week, what do you think about these two budgets? I don't like either one of them. It's the bottom line. But the reality of this is, we can't have our cake and eat it too. Now, I've had all kind of people in the last few weeks, they've come up and they've told me, you reminded me, oh, I ran on lowering taxes. I did. There's a way that we can do it, but it's gonna hurt. But it's also gonna hurt down the road, because a lot of that incremental growth that we're doing, I'm sure everybody in here remembers back in 2023, that's probably why I got elected, was because of a big tax increase. Why did they increase the taxes then so much? Because they didn't do it for years before that, and they realized, oh, no, we gotta hire a bunch of people, we gotta provide a bunch of services right now, or we're gonna be in a bad way in this county. If we don't hire all the people that are in here, what we're gonna end up with is in our 2027 budget, we're gonna be even further behind, and we're gonna have to say, oh, now we not only have to hire the people for 2027, we gotta go back and hire those people we didn't hire in 2026. So, we can cut the taxes, or cut the tax, or excuse me, cut the millage rate and cut the budget enough to where we can make it work this year. Next year, we're gonna be in a much worse situation, and we won't be able to cut this stuff again next year. So, the elected leadership in this room, they've got choices to make. It's not pretty. It's ugly. I don't like it. I don't think anybody else likes it. There's been a lot of people that have lost sleep over this, on both sides of this coin. But that's our two choices. I don't know what else to say about the budget other than that. So, barring any other discussion from up here, we're just gonna move into public comment, if that's okay? That's fine. So.
You have John Robinson. Oh, we need a motion. Sorry.
I did not see it sign up.
We'll get you on the end of the list.
Oh, one second, we've gotta open up for.
Oh, excuse me, we gotta have a motion for public comments. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Right. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? I wanna pass something here. I hope my five minutes hasn't started already.
We'll let you get set up, don't worry.
Appreciate you.
Dow, you have this on electronic too?
Hi, my name is John Robinson. I've been a resident here of Statesboro, Bullock County, for the last 25 years. And today, what I wanna talk to you about the community equity and intangible impact of the Bullock County Recreation and Parks, and I'm gonna refer to them in my presentation a lot of time, excuse me, by the acronym PCRP, to the communities served due to the budget cut proposal. Can we all agree, enhancing quality of life through our community engagement? I would never thought 25 years ago, when I moved to Bullock County, I'd be standing in front of the county commissioner. I see a lot of faces that's in the park and recreation, I know, when they first started here, and it's good to see. I'm very proud, it's my friends, when they come to town, to show them our facility. There's a state art, I don't think there's no city with 50,000 or less citizens have a better rate department than what we have. So, if you don't mind, slide. A call for the community equity, and I'm not gonna read it, because you have it in front of you, but it's just some things that I wanna touch bases on. Community equity must be the heart of our decision-making, especially when those decisions directly affect the people that we serve. When you talk about cuts to recreation, we must remember, when we're not just trimming budget, we're impacting the fabric of real lives and communities. we're impacting the fabric of real lives and communities. Next slide. Community connection and social coherence. Ensuring all neighbors, rural, urban, affluent and underserved, receiving access to share space that build unity. Bringing people together. Neighborhood pride. Volunteers like myself. Civil engagement. PCRP acts as a community glue that brings together people of all backgrounds to form strong and more connected neighborhoods. Next slide. The budget cut, we're talking about mental and emotional well-being. Underserved and low-income communities often rely on our public green space for mental and emotional help. And I added my slide to just give you, to add context to the verbiage that I have up there. And we're talking about safe outlet for stress relief, positive role model, intergenerational engagement. From quiet nature walk to structured youth program to support mental health across all ages. Next slide. Mental health, I mean, youth development and charter building, character building. Cutting youth program disproportionately affect at-risk communities. Equity mean investing in their potential. Teach teamwork, discipline, leadership, and resilience. Constructive engagement, and we build confidence and self-work. These programs are more than just fun. They shape the future leaders of Bullock County that we need. Next slide. Public service, culture. When some families can't afford gyms or clinics, PCRP becomes their frontline for wellness. Encouraging lifestyle of activity, wellness, and preventive health habits. Health equality. Health is not just medical, it's culture. PCRP helps set that culture. Next slide. Education and cultural enrichment. Recreation is just physical, it's educational. Park lovers, playing field, often free or low-cost enrichment to every child. Learning opportunity, cultural awareness, and appreciation. Lifelong learning and courtesy. Whether it's STEM camps or cultural festivals, learning comes along through PCRP. Sense, next slide, please. Sense of safety and belonging. Equity access to public, safe public access is a human right, not a luxury. Belonging, community hub, trust between the community and local government, reducing social isolation. Public space can be powerful source for comfort and security. Community identity. You can see it because I'm running out of time. I got 36 seconds. Next slide, Dow. Long time community resentment, but I want to get to mine and closing. If we move forward without considering community equity, we risk harming those who rely on the CP the most. Instead of resulting to budget cut, let's shift our focus toward collaborative effort, city, county, small business, corporate partners that can drive growth and sustainability by enhancing marketing strategy, boosting community participation, expanding outreach to surrounding cities. We can increase revenue across key recreation access, including the agriculture complex, the corner center, Middle Mill Creek Recreation Park, and the Louisville North Center. It's essential those currently aligned with our form of growth and play.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I will, I will enter a copy of this into the minutes for the meeting as well. Okay.
Chad Avert.
Can I yield my time to Mr. Robinson? John did a great job. I won't go dearly, I don't have nearly in-depth or presentations as John did, but I will kind of reiterate a number of the things that John touched on as well. So my name's Chad Avert. I've been a resident here for 35 years in Bullock County. I want to say thank you to all you who are continuing to make Bullock County a great place to live. That goes for our elected officials, our county staff, and just the great people of this county that all work together to make this place what it is. And I'll reiterate that, that it's all of us working together that make Bullock County great, that have done that for the 35 years I've been here. And that's what will make us great as we continue on from here. As I hear you guys consider the areas that you may fund with your budget next year, I want to ask you that you maintain or increase the resources dedicated to our Parks and Recreation Department. Founded in 1948, this department has been one of the top departments in the state of Georgia for over 75 years. Programs for youth, special needs, senior adults, and all demographics in this community have provided a quality of life here in Bullock County that our citizens enjoy that you just don't get other places you go to. The late Dr. Will Grant, a Georgia Southern Physics professor and recreation advocate, once said, "You can judge a community on how well they treat their young and their young at heart." Our Parks and Recreation Department has always thrived on that very saying as we provide recreation services for all of our community. We also have a park system that is second to none for a community our size. John touched on that a little bit. Fair Road Park is where it all started, and that's where Max Lockwood started this Recreation Department in 1948. But that network of parks has grown to give us great facilities throughout this county. While Mill Creek, he mentioned, remains the centerpiece, staff and volunteers that I talked about earlier that have worked together, that staff and volunteers work together to get facilities in Portal, Brooklyn, Nevels, and Stilson. And with your recent approval, we can soon add, register to that list. So I urge you tonight to continue to fund our Parks and Recreation Department so that these facilities can be maintained to the standard we expect. They're there and we expect it to be maintained to a certain standard, and funding is so important to do that. And also so that we can fund the programs that are necessary to fill those parks up with our kids and our young, and our young at heart. So thank y'all for your time. I do want to, now that you've gone through the presentation, I don't want to leave out certainly a lot of that's about Parks and Recreation, but I want to say that, you know, we're here to support, or I personally am here to support the things in public works and public safety as well. So I don't want to leave those folks out. I'm more involved and more knowledgeable about the Parks and Recreation, but we know our public safety and our public works, people are so important. And as I see that we've got, you know, a need for additional staffing in both those areas, you know, I would encourage you guys to consider making sure that we're able to give them the resources they need in their areas as well. Thank y'all for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Avert.
Ted Redman.
Chairman, thank you for outlining the challenges that we face. I also think the county for putting real numbers in the budget. You know, actual dollars spent, actual dollars that have come into the county. So it looks like this year we have about a $2.5 million deficit. I think you briefed that, is that correct? And you also, I think you also mentioned that that could be partially mitigated through the fund balance or rainy day fund?
And that's what we're planning to do right now, is either one of these budgets is going to require us to withdraw funds from that rainy day fund in order to balance the budget.
Okay, and the 2026 budget, it looks like there's a $69 million budgeted, but there's 72 million that looks like that's forecast to be expended total. Looks like there's about another $3 million deficit. So my question is, how much money does this rainy day fund have in it? And is it always going to be a part of our budget planning?
So by county budget or by government budget guidelines, what they recommend is about a 28% fund balance available at any time.
Okay, so 20% of the 69 million or?
Correct. So, and what they had before the storm came in was about $20 million. Correct me if I'm wrong here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And if you don't mind yielding your time, I'll explain a little bit more. Okay. With that $20 million, like I said before, they've spent about 13 million of it. We've received about $5.6 million in payments back from FEMA and GMA, is that correct?
5.9.
So we're sitting at about, without taking my boots off here, about 11, 12 million dollars in the fund balance right now.
I have a follow-up question while we're at it.
Absolutely.
So you mentioned the FEMA GMA funding that is going to come in on their own schedule. Is that money going to go into the rainy day fund?
It will go back into the fund balance. However, some of that money is our, we're putting money back in the fund balance that has been spent out of the fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
So this being a public hearing, that's everybody that has signed up to speak. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, I know Mr. Sack, so that he would like to come up, we'll go ahead and if you'll just come up to the podium and state your name and address, we'll get you on the record and let you go.
My name's Lawton Sack. I would prefer not to give my address, the county has it on record, though. I've been coming for the last two years. This is the third budget process I've been a part of and watching, attended all the meetings over the last two years. Mr. Dow, if you could pull up the central constitutional things that Bullock County has to fund from the chairman's presentation. There was a lot of doom and gloom put here. And over the last three budget cycles, we have never pushed for a public safety cut. While I appreciate the two gentlemen, their work for recreation, their budget, the culture and recreation part is set to go up almost $1.6 million this year, which definitely could go towards the constitutional mandates that are put on us by the state of Georgia. There seems to be a middle ground that was missed in the two extremes that are being presented. We can fully fund our sheriff's department, our judges, our tax commissioner, our elections, our tax assessor, which you are required to do. But there's been a lot of talk, there's no fluff in here to cut. Again, that culture and recreation budget alone has $1.6 million just sitting there that can be looked at. And we have to be careful because we are talking about the taxpayers' money. And we're talking about senior citizens who every time they get a social security increase, Medicare comes in and inflation just completely eats all of that out of life. I have heard, and we saw the election last year, that the people of Bullock County have made it clear that they are tired of their taxes going up. The state of Georgia instituted Tabor hearings for this very reason because they were tired of local governments not rolling back the millage rate and saying, well, it's a technical tax increase. They wanted to make it clear to the taxpayers, this is indeed a tax increase. Over these last two years, I've personally gone through a lot of stuff. And I'm not going to reiterate all that here tonight. I've been called names. I've been blocked from joining civic organizations. I've paid a great price for standing up and speaking. I've had people to tell me to quit speaking. I've tried that this year. I've spoken once at a county commission meeting this entire year. And yet, I'm still put down. We cut down on the number of Facebook posts just to see what would happen. And we are still put down and ridiculed and saying, we don't want to work in this. We want to get rid of public safety. And we have never called for that. Now, I could put on my political hat here tonight and say, I hope you raise taxes so that we can beat you again next year during the primary. But that wouldn't be fair to the taxpayers of Bullock County. If you're tired of hearing from me, listen to the people of Bullock County, and I'll quit standing up here. And I'll quit posting stuff on Facebook. And I'll quit doing the research. But as long as you ignore the voices of this county, and they spoke loudly last year, two to one, they spoke that they did not want their taxes increased. There is room in this budget to do this with a full rollback. I've worked tirelessly over these last two years. I haven't just been stirring up trouble. I've been working with the state of Georgia, finding resources for Bullock County, of trying to bring things here to help our property taxpayers to reduce the burden upon them. One of those is FLOS. And we're going to have a chance in November to vote on that. But we need the commissioners to be brave and to say, we'll hold on tight until we can get that passed. And we will pass a balanced budget that is not on the backs of property tax owners. Enough is enough. And we will remember next May, when we have the primary, on the decision that will be made by these commissioners. Nobody wants their sign, name on a sign again. But we will produce those if we have to. I would rather work with y'all than against y'all. But for that to happen, you have to start listening to the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak?
Fortunately, I'm up here and I'm really disgusted by your attitude. I don't like it. It is not the person we elected. I'm very disappointed. I'm here because the public deserves clarity and transparency in the budgeting process. You presented two budgets. We've only had one from Christie. Where's yours? Why wasn't it put out before a public hearing so that the citizens could legitimately weigh in on what y'all are doing or what y'all are talking about today? We can't weigh in on something that we haven't seen both sides. You told us a couple meetings ago that you were going to present your budget as well, but I don't see any numbers. Where are the numbers? Are the numbers going to be presented in a format like Christie's already done?
Yes.
How can we be expected to comment and give input on a budget we haven't even seen? On top of that, I want to remind you that two years ago, citizens gave a clear direction, tax increases are unacceptable. That message was loud and clear. It still stands. I could replay your speech. It's very appropriate tonight. I'm not trying to be ugly, but I was very unhappy with your performance tonight. You gave a doom and gloom, and there is no doom and gloom. We could sit, all of us, sit at a work session table and go through the budget, line item by line item, from all of your staff here, and look legitimately, when there's 183% increase just in one line item from the sheriff's department for small equipment, that's something that legitimately should be looked at. When there's a $1.5 million increase in recreation, that's something that legitimately should be looked at. When the elections department is horrifically overstaffed, that should be something that is legitimately looked at. There's things that we can legitimately look at to cut the budget to not have a tax increase. I would encourage you to do a citizens' work session of sorts where we legitimately go through line by line the budget with volunteers. People who do this, because I guess we have nothing better to do, but we can do that. We don't have to have doom and gloom. We don't have to have cuts to public safety. This is something we all can do. It doesn't have to be nasty like it was. It can be something that's good for all citizens, the taxpayers, for the employees, for everybody. So please, post your budget and allow us to all legitimately look at the budgets to give input. And I would encourage you to have some sort of roundtable discussion with hopefully more people than this, but we can do better than this. Thank you.
Nick, when did you provide your changes for the budget?
Yesterday.
Christie, when did you get that budget completed? So there's your reason why it wasn't published yet.
Well, then we probably shouldn't have had a public meeting then.
Unfortunately, we have to have a budget made by the 1st of July.
Would you entertain the idea to have a public sit-down with people like me who are volunteers who have legitimately gone through this budget?
I think that we're at the point now where we're going to have to make a choice.
It doesn't have to be doom and gloom.
But we have to make a choice.
Yes.
Ma'am, would you like to speak?
My name is Cathy Ong, and I've been in Bullock County since 1991. And I have been the 4-H lady for eight-plus years. When I first came here, I'm married, I have three children. They have done recreation. They have done different activities here in Bullock County. And I just want you to know that I appreciate you making hard choices. Nobody wants their taxes to go up. I don't. But I appreciate the job that each of you are trying to do. Because regardless of what anyone else says, every single thing that we have in Bullock County, it is important. County, it is important. It is important that we have our law enforcement. It is important that when someone calls EMS, that they're there to show up. But it is also important that when we have children and we have adults who are young at heart, it is important for them to have activities to do as well. If any of you have had children involved in sports or other activities, you know how important teen building is. Because the majority of you in here have kids who are involved in sports, and you know the kind of character that that builds. You have kids who have volunteered to coach athletics, to coach cheer, to do things like that. And when you have young people who are investing their time to volunteer at something and they're not getting paid a dime, it's important as well. So I just want you to know that I appreciate you having to make hard decisions. And as a person who has been here since 1991, I will support those decisions. If we have to tighten our belt, we will tighten our belt. But when you're talking about cutting positions, that's livelihoods that you're cutting. It is people who have kids and who have bills. I don't want a tax increase, but I appreciate you taking the time to make hard decisions because it matters to Bullock County. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? Here, no one else, I'm going to call for a motion to conclude this meeting.
Some little chairman.
All in favor?
Commissioner's talk, or?
Absolutely.
I wasn't sure what time this was going to happen, but I've been coaching the rent department is very dear to me. But I also know that the people of Bullock County made a big stand last year. And I mean, I don't think anybody in this room can argue that point. The citizens of Bullock County were ready for a change, and that's why three of the four new ones are up here right now. It wasn't because I was who I was. I know I got elected because the taxes were going up and the individual before me voted for him. That's the only reason why I got elected. And I think we all need to remember that. You know, and I hear these stories about these citizens in the county, senior citizens are having to make a decision about possibly selling their house that they've been in for 30, 40, 50 years, and the land has been in their family for 100 years because they can't afford the taxes. And that's where we are at right now. You know, and we're going to have to make some cuts, or at least I think we need to make some cuts. You know, the budget that I've been working on, I didn't have anybody, I don't believe I'd had any cuts to existing positions. I think we can work with the tax cut budget that we have, I think we can work a little bit with that. I know if we hire the eight SRO officers, that will actually give us more money that we're getting from the BOE that we can hire the six EMS workers that we want to put in Stilson. I'm very passionate about having those down there. I've been in that position down there at the 119 curve and had to call the ambulance and have to sit there for 45 minutes waiting on ambulance. So that's one of the big things that I want to do. And I think if we continue the eight SRO officers, we can hire the six. So that would be 14 of the, I guess, 22 positions that we said we were going to cut that we could hire, you know, that we can hire. And I think it's just little things. I mean, I'm taking, you know, my proposal, I would take away all travel and education for the commissioners. Because I want to show that I'm, I want to have cuts myself to be able to pass them on so we can continue the way we're doing right now. I think we all, like I said, what the budget I presented didn't have any cuts to current staff. It was potential staff, and it wasn't the 22 that was up on the board. I had maybe seven, six or seven that I didn't, I didn't feel like we needed to hire right now. But if we get some of this FEMA money coming back in, I know we got to repay about six or seven million to the fund balance. And then the rest of the money that we're getting that Public Works is doing a lot of extra work right now. They're doing a lot of work for my day in Debbie, and that will go back to the general fund. Something else that I hadn't seen in the budget is this water revenue that we're supposed to be getting from Bryan County. Those wells are supposed to be going online at the end of July, I believe. And I didn't see any income in that, so I don't know where that money's going to. I didn't see where we had money that was from this water mitigation fund that was supposed to be paying for James Pope to be working and all the extra hours we're doing there. So I think there's money out there that's not accounted for right now, and I don't know where it is. I know in '27 or '28 tax year, we're supposed to be getting about $2.5 to $3 million a year straight from Hyundai. So we got money coming in. We just need to lay low for a little bit just till we get there. That's my two cents. Appreciate it.
Christie, I just want to clarify with you. Will you explain why we can't use the funding for the SROs?
The SROs will be partially funded by, mostly funded by the BOE, but not fully funded. So there will be a small cost to the county for the SROs. There will not be more revenue than it's going to cost us to hire them. So that won't pay for anything additional. And I realize that your suggestion did not cut all the positions. The direction that I was given was to merge the budgets and keep, make the cuts as deep as I could to try and show what it would take to cut. Is there anything else?
To balance the budget.
Yeah, to balance, yes.
So the SROs, I think we've had like paid like $240 for the SROs, and we were supposed to get like $440 back from the BOE. I think those are the numbers that were given at one point. That's not correct?
I don't think that I have that slide in front of me to tell you. I think the revenue was an additional, I think, around a half a million, but it was going to cost more than that. I think the net cost was going to be 200-something, which is what the cost was going to be above the revenue. And that's just from memory. I don't have that in front of me at the moment.
Okay.
We still do have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to point out, no matter which way this goes, everybody's talking about the fund balance and rainy day fund, whatever you want to call it. And I think the number's 15 million. But there was some more money in that spent out of other, like T-Splash and all that, whatever we could use to cover these storms with. Now, the fund balance, we don't have to maintain that. We could spend every bit of it year by year. We could pick at it $2.5 million each time. If we hadn't took it hit with the insurance, we had been in pretty good shape this year. But we starting out now with $2.5 million going out of that fund balance. There's, I don't know what the number was that's still outstanding with FEMA and GMA, that it could take two or three years to get that money back. They talking about doing away with FEMA and turning it over to GMA and let each state handle it. I don't know what the effects of that time turn on the money will be. Probably the way everything, it'll be longer than the federal stuff. But that rainy day funding and everything, everybody knows we got a sheriff's department to build, and we got bonds, and the way you conduct business up here, it sets the precedent of what your credit score is. Now, anybody that's ever had any bad credit before, and I have, I can tell you that it 'll change your payments drastically. So if we don't maintain and watch out after that, because we fixing to go into hurricane season, and we done down to, did y'all say $8 million in that thing? Is that right? Whatever it is, it don't matter. It could take just a little small storm in Bullock County, it's a big county, it'd eat up $5 or $6 million before you could stand up out this chair. And you cut that fund balance down to nothing, and we sitting here waiting on the whale water or waiting on whatever we waiting on, waiting on, and we ain't got a fund balance, and we got the jail coming, everybody knows that. And for the ones that don't know, there's going to be a judicial annex right behind that, piggybacking right on it with several millions of dollars. And so if it ain't played just right, whichever way we go with this today is going to change the future because next year, we're going to be starting in a hole already. So then we're going to start playing with our credit score. And then you got a $60 million jail, and then probably, I don't know how many million dollar judicial annex. And so you don't want a bad, the bad credit score will way surpass anything else you could possibly imagine. I just wanted to explain that to the ones that didn't know. It's not just the fund balance, it's the credit score that we got to watch after this going to fall back on the $60 million, and then the judicial annex, and then whatever else comes. Because like Commissioner Newkirk said, in '27 or '28, we, the county is going to be in good shape. But, you know, that's '27 or '28. And we don't know what's going to happen between now and then. I just wanted to point that out so everybody would understand about the fund balance because a lot of people say, "Well, why don't you just use it up?" And we can do that. But then, you know, to keep these roads up, that keeps everybody going, the ambulance is running to, not only that, it gets down to the individuals that you get to go back to your job every day to make your family a living. And if we don't keep the roads up, and when we run out of money, we won't keep the roads up. So that's something to think about. That's all I got.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification, will there be other staff comments, or is this the conclusion of it?
If you'd like to speak, now is your opportunity.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of things. Number one, I'd like to thank Christie for the hard work she's done on the budget, remembering why she was hired and why she is the CFO. You can ask anyone who's worked with her, especially yourself, the other commissioners, and I know some of you are fairly new in dealing with her, but I think she has answered your questions, and has done so very professionally, and I appreciate that. I would also like to say that I will not be present when the budget is voted on due to a trip that was planned, as you know, before I took the interim position. It is out of the country, and my wife would pretty well do me in if I tried to change that. I would like to go on record as saying a couple of things about the budget. Number one, I appreciate your support. I would like to tell everyone that you have sat in a room in one time in particular in excess of three hours to go over the budget line by line, to try to find things that were fluff or not needed. You spent that time with the budget team of Bullock County, and I appreciate that. I would like also to go on record that I support the budget as prepared by Christie and her team, and think that that is the right thing at this time. Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I echo what interim county manager Tillman said. I spent many hours going through the budget, probably more hours than in recent years. And I thought I had put in a lot of time there, but just trying to understand it. I understand that none of us likes a tax increase. I don't like a tax increase. But I also understand that when I looked at the numbers, probably if we'd have made the decision not to do the rollback last year, we wouldn't have the discussion that we're having today. It's a tough decision. And as Mr. Lawton referred to about comments, I've had a lot of comments. Some were not pretty, but I was elected to study and make the best decisions that I could. And I have put in the effort, and so I fully support what our CFO has put together. Spent some time with her last week, just trying to get some more questions answered. And like I said, it is a tough decision. I've talked to many elderly people, and I've been trying to make sure that people know, if you haven't signed up for home state exemption, please do so. With that being said, though, like I said, I think we have to make the tough decisions or we're going to be back here next year with some tougher decisions. Thank you.
Can I, I'd just like to add one thing. The Water Mitigation Fund is an ongoing conversation with Bryan County on how we're going to set that up. There will be a small amount of money coming from that fund to cover some of the expenses that the county has put forth, but I don't have the details yet on how it's going to be set up and accounted for and managed yet. That's an ongoing issue that has to be worked out with Bryan County because it has to be a joint fund. Also, the water, the money that we'll be receiving from Bryan County for the sale of the water will have to go into its own water fund. And I realize I don't have that fund set up either. That is more of just a lack of my time to figure out how that needs to be accounted for. But it is not going to directly impact the general fund immediately until we see what kind of, how much revenue that's going to be, and then we can make decisions about what we need to spend it on, what we need to save it for related to the water infrastructure, and then we can make decisions on what's left over and can we transfer it to the general fund to offset expenses there. And that will come, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say this. I support Ms. Christie, and I also support the way that you stood up, and it took time to explain what was going on up here. I think that was a good way to start the meeting, a good way to end it. You took time to break it down the best you could. I appreciate you for doing that. And I appreciate the way that you conducted yourself in a manly way. I might have flew off the handle, but you did a good job, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Simmons, that means a lot coming from you. Before we close this up, I'm just going to say a couple of things here. You know, nobody likes us more than I do. I never dreamt a year ago that I would be in the situation that I'm in right now. It's not fun. This is not something that I take lightly. But I can tell you something that, well, I'll tell you two things. As much as I'd like to lower taxes, if the choice comes down to people being harmed or their safety being compromised or a tax increase, I'm going to raise taxes. I'm also going to tell you this, that over my lifetime, I've had to make a lot of hard choices, choices that I didn't like. I'm not going to hide from this. If I have to make a choice, that's what I'm going to do. I've tried to lay this out the best that I can. I don't know how else to do it. It's ugly. The next couple of years are going to be rough. There's a lot of money floating around out there. I had a conversation yesterday with Senator Warnock's chief of staff about FEMA money. But the reality is, we have to budget off of the money that is here right now, not ifs and buts. You know, if we talked about ifs and buts, we could talk about if we didn't have 10 years of tax abatements on industry coming into this county. We could talk about if we didn't do a rollback last year. We could talk about if we had money from FEMA, if we had money from the water, if we were getting money from Hyundai right now. I'd love to have all those things. That would be a wonderful predicament to be in because we could grow and expand things right now. Unfortunately, we're not there. And I've told people up here before that there's been times over the last couple of months that I really feel like, I don't think this is what happened. what happened, but I really feel like maybe somebody's trying to set me up for failure But I'm going to tell you, as much as I don't like this, there's a lot of things that we can do next year to make it better, but y'all, the game clock has run out, and it's time to make a decision. I don't know what else to say. I don't like it either.
Barring any other comments, I think we have a motion that's been seconded to adjourn this meeting.
If you don't second it again.
That first motion and second was to close the floor to public comments, and now we need a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Venus. Do I have all in favor? Meeting adjourned.